So we'd like to call to order the February thirteenth meeting, two twenty twenty four meeting of the Winchester Planning Board and we can just do a roll call for all present. Nick?
Present.
And Carrie?
Present.
And I am present and that constitutes a quorum. I think eaching is perhaps running late. I don't know. And I know that 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 Diab is is not feeling well, so he's not going to attend the meeting this evening. Um, and so with the meeting open, um, I have no updates right now. Taylor, do you?
Uh, yes, I have two.
Great.
The first update that we'll start with is I sent out this afternoon. A the decision for water field. The the changes that we can make at this point are are limited to, you know, basically to spelling errors, but the if if anyone wants to take a look, it would need it will be going in to get stamped tomorrow morning, town clerk. Um, and then it will be sent off to the the developers. And Jay has reviewed it and or so town town council has has reviewed it and a few more, you know, spelling and grammar issues to narrow narrow down this afternoon or this evening. But other than that, that that decision is 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 complete.
A quick question on that, Taylor. I sent you one edit. Did you get the email that I sent?
Yep, changing changing or to and yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. That also for everyone in the public, once that decision is submitted to the town clerk's office, I'm hoping to get down there or up there. You know, between town hall open and lunchtime, um, it will be posted publicly as well for everyone to see. The second uh, second update will be regarding forty Church Street. So it came to our attention a few weeks back that the windows that they have in the front of their property aren't to the specifications to the way of the windows that the planning board decide uh, approve the project with. We have so this, this is, this is an enforcement issue. This is something that-
Seen the house and it's really, really unfortunate. It's I I my when I look at it the first time, I said they couldn't do worse. Um, but um, I guess this is what we I guess there's a process.
That that's right. There's an enforcement process, Taylor.
But I'm sorry to have interrupted. I want to hear the the disposition.
So so we we have the opportunity to, well, the the planning board has has no the 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 planning board can't can't do anything themselves because the planning board is not in an enforcement body. But is but is the job of the zoning enforcement officer who's our also our building commissioner, Tom Kennedy, to make sure that the the uh, the buildings that are approved by the planning board are also constructed as 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 approved. So we do have some enforcement questions to figure out uh, between myself and and Tom. But I need to get an opinion from members of the planning board who were here tonight, whether they want to issue a stop work or not.
I'd say that's a tough call. I mean, I don't know. Um.
Can I can I say?
We're 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 within our right to do it. I I feel like it's it's an impossible task. And I feel like they are I don't know how to put this, but so tone deaf to the design sensibilities of Winchester that it would be impossible them for them to grasp what we're asking. And I don't know um whether that factors in and I I don't just want to make people do stuff. Um, but on the other hand, I'm really disappointed. I don't know if this sets a precedent.
What's the step past the stop work?
Um, well, stop work is technically the 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 first and only step that we have to enforce. We can impose. I'm I'm assuming that there are some fines that we can oppose or in in impose. Um, but uh, but the 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 stop work is a pretty penultimate solution. It it means that they cannot continue doing any work on the property um, until their design is rectified.
Yeah, you know, I have to say that having-
They need to buy the correct windows and have those installed.
Can you say it again? Sorry.
The the step after the stop work is they have to buy the correct windows and install those.
Correct. In order to receive a notice that they can they can work again. And Ellen, I do see your hand. I'll I'll get to after we finish our conversation.
Yeah, that'll be an important comment. Um.
I I one question I have, I do. Am I right in remembering that they had communicated that they had already purchased the windows at the time that we said that they were not the windows that we wanted?
They repurchased the front windows. So the front, the windows that that are in that are mostly in question right now are windows that they purchased again.
Oh.
Or in addition to the windows that they already had um, in attempt in their I'm putting words in their mouths here, but in their their attempt to comply with with the design guidelines set forth by the planning board.
So I'm very uncomfortable with the planning board being asked to make a decision about such a thing um, in in advance of it being on our agenda. And if we have to meet next week and put this on our agenda, we should. But what I would say is that I would want to have in hand. I I'm frankly, I haven't been by the building, so I can't say what it looks like right now. I'm sorry to say. But um, I would want to have in hand exactly what they installed and exactly what we approved. Um, so that we have documentation of the um, the the um nonconformance or with our permit.
The reason why it's been if we're doing this as an update is because this, you know, we wanted to get it out there now. Every day that goes by and every nail that they put in, it becomes harder and harder to accomplish that stop work.
Well, I think we made a lot of concessions moving that project forward and I'm I'm disappointed that it's progressing with new purchases that were not what was recommended.
I am too. I I'm really disappointed.
I agree.
I think it'd be helpful to hear from Ellen if we can do that.
Well, and you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, well, I'm speaking all oh, says I can't start the my video. So you guess you're just gonna have to listen. Um, uh, yeah, um.
Can we get her to sort of fix it?
It's fine. It's fine. Um. Yeah, I I'd like to echo what Carrie just said, which is that um you know, the the planning board uh decision was quite generous towards this applicant um, in allowing um, him to use on the sides of the building, um, the windows that he had already purchased, but was so what was minimally required of him was to uh not do that on the front and 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 I believe there are specifications in the minutes and certainly in our minutes there are. Um, and I'm really concerned because it's it it does set a really bad precedent um, for the CBD process. Um, you you know, he's already been given so many so many concessions. I'm not I'm not convinced that he doesn't get it. I think he I think he pushes um pushes the envelope and wait, you know, it's easier to ask for uh uh forgiveness than permission. And um, you know, I'm just really concerned that this you know, what what kind of what kind of teeth are in the CBD regulations? When when things are let to let slide like this. Um, I mean, in my opinion, he was already granted a huge amount of leeway by the planning board. And the the little that he is was asked to do, you know, he's he's not doing it and I um you know, I I Sally, I think the information that you're seeking, there are there are, I believe Taylor has photographs of what it looks like now. I believe in either our minutes or your minutes, there's a lit, there's specifications of what he's do. I think you can look at those really quickly. You don't have to have another meeting about this. We need it, it, you know, if whatever happens, you know, it needs to happen very quickly. Um, and um, again, Nick said, I don't know if it's a precedent. It is a precedent. And um, you know, I don't think and again, it's not something the planning board has to or can enforce, but it's a question of where to go between the between Taylor and um our current building.
So you don't think that they're just really dumb about design?
I don't know.
Sorry?
Using their efforts, it's gonna be helpful. I think you have to decide if they've varied enough from the plan to require us to stop them from going for it. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's speculation. I, you know, I mean, I know what I think, but but Carrie's right. You know, the fact these are the facts. Um, this is what he agreed to. Um, you know, um, this does not match. Oh, and by the way, there's other things that he's done that are it does not match the plans that he submitted, but we're not even going to go there because that's on the newer part of the building. So um, I I would urge you to allow or not, you don't have to allow, but I would I would I would urge it, you know, looking into this.
So I did pull up the minutes on my computer um, from uh, the design review committee minutes of Wednesday, November first. And um, second agenda or third agenda item is forty Church Street. And uh, it reported that the design review committee members felt strongly about the following details, which were discussed at length with the owners. And the first bullet item is windows are to be historically accurate or historically appropriate, such as Marvin Integrity dot Anderson one hundred and will be two over two, not six over six. Anderson one hundred are made of fiber X with grills between the glass. The window sashes are wider, resulting in smaller glass area. And I seem to remember that um, in in the meeting that we had in at the high school with the um the applicant, that Marvin Integrity is a is a moniker that they have uh, discontinued and replaced with a different name. Um, and I don't remember what that name is. Um, but it doesn't say in the letter. Um, and maybe I need to look at our planning board approval. Um, uh, what if if the windows, I because I haven't I can't picture them. If they're not two over two or if they're not in compliance with that minimum statement there, then yeah, we have an issue.
Well, the other issue, and I guess I don't know if it made it into your minutes and I I'd I'd need to take a minute to look at what ours said was that in addition to that, those um single pane, very thin curved um, original windows on the front um, were to be replaced with single pane. There was not going to be any kind of dividers in those or anything else because they never had them.
Right.
And what's been put on is tripartite and it is a obviously a it's 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 some sort of storm or something that's got three sections and is obviously vinyl. And uh it, you know, maybe maybe the applicant thinks that because the original window is still behind that, that that's acceptable. But um.
It looked to me like it was the window.
Well, it could be. I haven't been-
There's no original window that they they basically sanded out the entire, but go ahead. Sorry.
They took it out. I think they took it out and replaced it with this piece that has
three. We have lots to do and at seven thirty though. Taylor, do you feel from what you've seen that they're violating what we set as conditions for the approval of the project?
So I the the only thing that 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 I think I think the most important thing here is that as the planning board, they are not installing windows that the planning board decided that um, agreed upon with them to 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 install. This is a zoning enforcement issue. If the planning board opposes doing anything, um, that's really the only question on 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 the table. Does the planning board want to want to be lenient? And let this go? Or do they want to enforce the stop work and potentially, you know, have all the consequences that come with it? That's really the only thing.
So is it appropriate in the S in in the interest of time that a motion be made and a three vote vote be taken?
We no, there's no, we we don't need a vote. This is just all this is all uh, what what do?
So it's it's the will of-
Please advise the town planner as to what you want the town planner and the building commissioner to discuss about tomorrow regarding forty church.
Well, I will not vote, but but assert that I think being in violation of what the planning board approved is not acceptable and it's sounds like it's a situation where a stop work needs to be issued, even if it ends up just being an information gathering opportunity.
Yeah, I guess I would I would I would support that.
And I would agree with that, too. Thank you, Carrie.
I'll have a conversation with Tom in the morning and we'll proceed with uh um, finding the best solution to do that on as as soon as possible.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thanks, Taylor. I I don't envy you.
Sorry about that.
We had discussed on doing uh, minutes. Um.
And I have a very minor edit on the minutes. I can set to me from me. Um, there was two sets of minutes that we had to review for January twenty third and January thirtieth. Um, I have one edit or question on the minutes of January twenty third and none on the minutes of January thirtieth. Do anybody else have any? No?
No.
My only question is on the first page of the January twenty third minutes, Taylor, um, a number one updates, Mr. Herman. And and it's just in that document there where it says for each, it's the sentence. Um, there's a public meeting on the three A overlay districts at town hall on Wednesday, the twenty fourth at seven P M. We'll be presenting and discussing details for each. That would imply that there was two topics to the meeting, not just the three A overlay. And in fact, it was the three A overlay districts and the North Main Street rezoning that we talked about on January twenty fourth. Is that right?
That's correct.
And that's so we should insert and North Main Street rezoning um, to that sentence. And I can talk to Nancy, um, let Nancy Pulcari know.
Okay, Nancy is here with us tonight, too.
Nancy's touching hands, I'm sure. Um, that's all I had.
Motion to prove the minutes, please.
So moved.
Can I second?
I vote aye.
So you 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 have to run the roll call. I can't.
Okay, yeah. So Nick, you said aye and Carrie?
Aye.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So that makes a three.
Three oh.
Oh. Two. Three in favor, none opposed and two absent.
And you said that you had no no updates for the for the thirtieth?
Yes. So I guess I can move to have the board accept the minutes of January thirtieth.
Do I need you? Can you make that motion or do you need someone to make that motion? I will so move.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I would second it. Thank you, Carrie. So roll call vote. Um, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And Sally, I say aye. So that's also three zero two approved minutes. Thank you.
Okay, oops. The next uh agenda item, it's another enforcement. Um, yeah, so we have uh, we have the newly renovated Starbucks. Uh, we do have a uh, Mr. Daniel Brennan with us. Um, I'll let I'll unmute you, Daniel, and I'll introduce the the agenda item here. So it came to our attention after the Starbucks was um redone that there is uh, window tint film on the um, particularly on the Thompson Street window, um, which is um, let me pull it up, which does not comply with the rules and regulations of the central business district. So in the central business district, if you're a retail um, for retail uses, in general, retail restaurant uses uh, shall focus on aliving existing streets in the town center. And we're in a actual interesting situation here. Um, Daniel and his team did not have to go through the planning board in order to because there was no exterior changes uh, on the on on the building. So they did not have to go through the planning board, but these are rules and regulations which the planning board has to uphold. So we have a question about um, what the planning board wants to do about or wants to request uh, the business owner do with um, with the film on that on that window. Um, so I'd like to give Daniel the opportunity to um, talk about talk about that film and specifically inform the planning board if it's possible to remove that film.
Sure. Um, thank you, Taylor. Board members. Um, my name's Daniel Brennan and I handle permits and licenses for Starbucks in the region. Um, we applied for a renovation permit here um, back in July. Um, there were some signage updates on the exterior. They changed it from Starbucks coffee to Starbucks. So but that was handled on a separate permit with our sign vendor. So our building permit was um, just for interior renovation. Um, but part of it did include um, changing up the layout because a lot of the equipment was old and too small. Um, we needed to move the ice machine up from the basement and try to get on the operation more on the first floor because it wasn't working out. Um, so in that um, our design kind of went in front of some of the windows in our storefront because we do have um, mostly windows. We really only have really just our back wall that doesn't have windows on it pretty much. So um, in our design, we had to put up some window film just to kind of block out the workroom employee areas. Um, we were not aware of uh, this bylaw in the in the town. And um, unfortunately, I don't think planning planning wasn't listed on the open gov um, lineup of departments to review, probably because it was interior like Taylor said. Um, so that's kind of how we got here. Um, that I confirmed before this meeting, I just found out about this violation um, last night. So um, I did try to find out like if the sign vendor had proposed this window film or who installed this window film. Um, maybe it would have gotten caught if it was on the sign contractors portion. Um, but unfortunately it wasn't. It was done on the interior by the general contractor. Um, so I don't know what options we could do um, as far as maybe applying for a variance if one of those would be available. Um, I do have like the drawings that we submitted. If you want, I could share my screen so I could kind of give you more detail in how we got here and what are some possible fixes? Um, is that allowed?
I would be interested to see the drawings because it's one of the questions I have.
Mm hmm. Okay, let's see.
Thank you, Daniel.
Sure. Okay, uh, so you can see my screen here. This is the new layout. And um, here in question is where our our window films. Um, as you can see, we have a three comp sink in a in a wall built there. So um, our options are pretty limited on what we can do.
I just need to get oriented to the drawings. So this is um, to the lower part of the drawing is that's the double entry door that is in the same place that it is now?
Yes, um, let's see.
The darkened window kind of faces where the fuller cup was.
Oh, I see. And so that was on the drawing.
Yeah, yep, these were the drawings.
Okay, and let's go to the detail page where it says darkened window.
This is it right here. So um, it just kind of shows where the window film would be.
Was it labeled as window film in the drawings?
Yeah, um.
Well, it looks darker than the other ones.
Opaque window film.
This thing storefront, here it is.
One side- Window film at existing storefront, provide opaque window film at existing storefront.
Yeah, so there's two different areas. So there's this other area right over here. That kind of shoots down our coffee line. So they they put one there as well. So I think thi- this side is the darker.
Is is that the original? Can you go back to that?
Yeah.
This this is the way it was originally?
Yeah, so this is the way it was originally. You can see like our employees had a tough time because the ware washing area was super tiny, like this is typical. Our bathroom was super tiny. Um, let's see. Down here in the they they would have to go down to the basement to get the ice and and hoof it up all the time. Um, there were refrigerators down there and stuff like that. So um, I'm I'm not sure what the sales are like at this store and I wasn't fully involved in the design. I just handled the submittals and the approvals, but I'm guessing that it was hard for the workers and it wasn't um, like health compliant, ADA compliant. Maybe there wasn't a ton of um, visitors in the cafe. So they wanted to basically update it so they can include more of the newer equipment. You can see this is what the new layout looks like. They brought the manager desk upstairs, the ice machines upstairs. Now they have a a a fully functional restroom now. They've got, you know, the three base sink with the under counter dishwasher and they have the pot filling station that they have at most of their locations. So um, that was the thought on it. Um, and it we we honestly, I I guess somehow it got missed through the reviews. I wish it did get tagged when we originally submitted, so it wasn't an afterthought, but um, I I've tried to see what are some things we could possibly do. Here's here was the existing. And then here's the new. Um.
And when you say gradient um, film, do you mean that it it um, goes from fairly opaque to fairly transparent? Is that what you mean?
I tried to get a picture of it um, before this meeting. I didn't, I wasn't able to grab one. Um, so I'm not positive, but I think on this end, it's more of like a frost. And and I'm not sure. I haven't seen a picture of it. And on this one, it's more of like a dark window tint.
Yeah, that's really.
So there is a line in our bylaw that says, you know, it's you know, realizes that future additions of storage room toilets and restaurant kitchens will limit transparency. So is there any option to put? What 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 are the what what could possibly happen here?
So like on this elevation, certainly this is just to block like the end of the coffee bar. So like this doesn't have to be a full blockage of these these windows. So we could, you know, make this up to four feet. So you know, you know, seeing all the the employees' legs and all that stuff that you don't really need to see, but it's still transparent. And then we're kind of stuck on on this other one a bit. I mean.
So I go all the way up? I wonder if it could be frosted instead of dark?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Or and maybe it doesn't go all the way up to the top.
Yep, that that's another option. I mean, there's a wall just built on the other side, but we're-
Well, it's what it sounds like you 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 closed off the windows. I mean, they're they remain in place, but like you just said, you put a wall on the inside. We go back to the floor plan for the new restaurant. I mean, the new coffee bar, whatever.
Sure.
The floor, yeah, so.
Does that go all the way up?
Yeah.
So those, how, how high are those? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven boxes that are there? I mean, the dishwasher goes counter height, sinks are counter height.
The wall is all the way up.
But does it have to be? That's, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
So I guess it could, there could be an option to, because I did actually discuss this. There are some vent, there is some venting in that wall, so we could like you said, this wall doesn't necessarily need to be full height. We could make it shorter and relocate the venting. Probably would be six feet high, I would say. And, and regardless, I mean, you'd be looking into this back workroom.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two sort of intentions are one to sort of give the, you know, passersby visual access to the retail environment inside. I don't think anyone's going to be excited to get at a dishwasher. So I understand wanting to sort of veil that area. And then the other is to enliven the landscape, and that's where black panels are just really depressing.
Yeah, and that's like, we're totally open to doing whatever to cover the window. I mean, as far as like, it was, it was even
What about a mural?
Yeah, it was offered that we could do like, even a local artist could put something.
Yeah, we have wonderful talent in this town.
Like some install window film or, or so- some kind of locally inspired artwork or, or something like that, because we recognize that, you know, this wasn't done in compliance. It wasn't done intentionally, but. Yeah, we're, we're open to see what would work, because this is kind of the hard spot here, this window.
Well, so I certainly think the idea of a mural is, or some locally inspired artwork, we have, as, as Carrie said, we have many very talented artists in town. And I certainly would not want the film to go all the way up to the top of the window frame. That is quintessentially depressing to see that. And on the church street side, not, not church street, excuse me, main street side, I would not want the film to be any higher or any more opaque than it needs to be.
Frosting rather than a dark tint.
Where did you get black from, Carrie? Was that in the original drawing?
I just live pretty close to there. It's pretty dark.
Oh, it's dark, okay. Yeah, so. I, I would just say that, I mean, short of reconfiguring the entire restaurant so that there's not equipment along an exterior wall that you would have to block the sight of. I think our only choice is to ask for something as transparent as possible and as low as possible. Does that seem right, Nick and Carrie?
Yeah, no, that does seem right. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of thinking of the way our screens are blurred. You know, it's, it's a little less obtrusive than, than a really dark film, and it, and it does provide privacy.
And I stay open to the mural idea, because if you, if it sort of protects the privacy or, you know, I know light can be sensitive in a food environment, you know, so if it sort of works to cover it, let's just not make it a solid, you know, we don't want people to walk by and be like, what's going on in there, you know, we want to sort of make it an attractive addition to the, to what we're seeing on the street, so.
I agree with that too.
Well, the thing is, and, and Nick, you, you made me think of this, that, that if it, if it's not a film applied to the glass, can it be a somewhat translucent kind of a, of, of, of a fabric covering or something, and I'm glad to see that Yi Ching's here because she might have some good ideas. But, and that, and that in the window sill and along the street edge there, there be a year-round effort to enliven the view through that glass. And on the lower areas, absolutely, it would be interesting to see what our local artist community can recommend. I think this is a really unfortunate oversight in the approving of this permit. Yi Ching?
Hi, hi everyone. I, I am just coming into this project, so I haven't seen it at all, so I don't feel completely comfortable. But this is covering up the, that, that area that's sort of the most lively in our town center, actually, right? I mean, that's, that's the, those are the benches that all the middle schoolers hang out at. Yeah.
And grownups.
True. Yeah, something that changes that I, I, I'm not sure what, what is it, it sounds like what you guys are proposing is, you know, would, would be better than a, opaque, kind of dead visual.
I think you can achieve translucent with a film too.
You can also do like a mural that's like pixelated. You know, it could be an, actually a computer graphic, but it could be a mirror barrel and then print it onto graphics that's like pixelated, so you can let in light as well as have kind, some kind of image on it.
Well, and the transparency is, is a function of how much light comes into the space, how much light spills out of the space into the street. In those times of the year when, when, you know, it's dark out at, at four o'clock. And it also has to do with the whole concept of walking by one of our downtown businesses and seeing the vitality of the merchandise and the customers. That's the whole point of the bylaw, so. I mean, Yi Ching, I think what you're saying is, is definitely in the realm of possibility. I just think we need to see some very specific suggestions from Starbucks on what they would do to address it. Like I said, the lower the better and the more transparent, the better. And then going back to the main street side, you were saying that the only part that you wanted to shade was the lower half of the main street. The lower half and the upper half in this drawing of the main street facade. And because you didn't want people looking in and seeing the legs of the people running around and so on. I, what calls, what that calls to mind is the concept of a display kitchen, which is not at all an uncommon paradigm for restaurants and eateries is to have a display kitchen and people can look in and see, look how busy, look how exciting.
Here you're gonna see like, really like even the floor, like I don't think it's typical that you see like the back bar of a, of a coffee floor, you know?
Yeah.
I totally agree though, and so does Starbucks for that matter, that is, we do want to be interactive with the customers and be seen and all of that. And that still would be captured, I think, with, you know, a four foot high option.
Right, I see that. What's the height of the kitchen counter in that center bay of the main street facade?
The height of the coffee counter? Right here?
Yep.
I think it's thirty-four inches, thirty-five inches, something like that. But then you have this pastry case that's on the end here. I'm not sure what the height of that is.
And is that, is that pastry case, does it have glass on the street side?
I'm not sure.
Well, it's an opportunity for people to be inspired to come in and get a pastry, you know. If you don't block it from the street view and if it's an attractive food case that artfully displays tempting treats. And if the counter is thirty-four inches higher, whatever you just said, I would not want the film to be any higher than the counter height, and I can understand Daniel's point that we don't want to see the lower half of the back of the counter, because you know, there's a, there's things that fell on the floor and people running around being fast, so. I just, I think that we need to work more with this to figure out, as I said, the lowest possible film and the most transparent that it can be as low as possible. So that's my feedback. So Carrie and Nick, do you have other?
Yeah, no, I, I, I would echo all of that. And I think we can, we can come up with a something that works, but I, 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 I think everything that Sally said was spot on.
Yeah, Starbucks needs to come back with something that works, but, but Carrie?
I, I think they understand what our interest in sort of like the, the changes that need to happen, and I look forward to hearing what we can do together.
So this is a feedback session for Daniel. No action required on our part at this time.
That's correct, and Dan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Daniel, the, 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 the process for, for us moving forward is that I will reach out to you and whether it's working with you or with your team, I will need to have contact with whoever you think is the best person to, to have contact with. Just so that we can understand our options, I can bring that in, in front of the board and we can we can, we can find, find a solution together.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Daniel.
You, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, you too.
Which brings us to the point in our agenda where we get to continue our conversation about constructing the edits and amendments to the MBTA three A zoning, overlay district zoning. And I see Taylor that the agenda does not include a discussion of the North Main Street rezoning. Are we sticking to the three A right now with the focus on design? Or development standards? Is that what we're doing?
We can certainly roll over to North Main if, because they are so integral and, and a part of each other, but the design standards for the overlay is where we're going to start.
Okay, so it's a complex process and I appreciate that you have a linear path to lead us through, so I encourage you to take it away.
Okay, so. So I sent members of the planning board week ago today, or week ago yesterday, our first draft of the zoning. Our, our zoning bylaw. That's a combination of three A and North Main. As I just mentioned, we'll probably, we'll just try to stick to three A for now. With the week that we've had, does anyone have any, I know that, that, that Nick would like to have some time to spend on, on examples that we have from neighboring communities, specifically Brookline, and we will get to that. That will be an important part of this conversation. But I would first like to cover some of the things that we've, that are in our current draft. What, what, what do we like? What do we don't like? I think maybe how, how about starting with the extremes? Is, is there something that, that is in there that we're just like, this isn't good enough, or this, this is, or?
What section are you talking about, Taylor? Because
The North Main section. I'm sorry. The, 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 the overlay option.
So each of us reviewed that document and sent it back to you with edits that then went out to council to be synthesized into a draft that we don't have back yet. Is that correct?
No, that is incorrect. That is, so, so council has seen our first draft, but based off of our conversation tonight. In our Z-Rack conversation tomorrow night, everyone who wants to join our Z-Rack conversation tomorrow night in the Winchester Room at seven PM. Based off of those two conversations, we're going to submit a second draft to town council and then we're going to receive more feedback back from them.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say that I am wanting to withhold comment on the non-development standards section of the three A zoning until we see a draft back. But I, unless we're going to take the time right now to go through all of this, I, I'd rather focus on the things that you sent us, the example of Brookline's development standards for their three A district. And the Brookline form-based code that they're using for the rezoning of their version of North Main Street, which is Harvard Street. And so I think it's really big to try to take on the development standards and their rezoning of the underlying zoning, underlying zoning of the Harvard Street districts. But I do think it's worth it for us to look at the development standards that they developed and the structure of the form-based code that they've proposed. If, if that's useful, if everybody agrees.
Just, I, I would just like to interject, so Sally, just so that I'm clear. This document here, I have to rewrite this before the end of the week. So I do need feedback. Now I'd like to hear some verbal feedback from every, from, from everyone. If there isn't any, okay, that's fine, but this, this document that we have, our document, does need to be rewritten this week. So.
To get back to us, so I'm sorry to be interrupted, I'm just confused about the process, Taylor.
So. Nick, you're muted.
Okay, yeah, I, I have a question. Are we? Are you drafting the zoning or, or, or are we getting help from Michael Wang to, to help us? I mean?
Everyone is involved, so we need to give information to we, we need a starting point. I'm creating that starting point. We're then handing off the, that starting point of North Main Street to our consultant, Michael Wang. Where then, and we're handing off the starting point for the overlay to Emily Innis. They're separately going to be revising and redoing th- those two sections. And then we're coming back. And then tha- that's what then gets submitted to, to town council.
All right, I thought that was what we had marked up the, the last week. It was, it was due a week ago last Friday to you. And that that was what had gotten incorporated and sent along to council and that it included Emily's and Michael's input on the portion of North Main and for Michael and three A for Emily. That, that's not happened yet?
And that's what we're looking at here. That's this document in front of us.
Yeah, Taylor, I think that the problem is that it's very difficult to understand, and I'm curious about how you're going to present it to Z-Rack tomorrow to help them understand and make decisions about it, because I think there's some things that are probably going to be shocking to people, right? It's, it's more like parking minimums or height of various districts uses, right? Those are, those are sort of the things that are, are going to be the most headline-making. Is that right? Is that what you're, you're thinking? Because when people look at this forty-page document, it's I don't think they see that, right? So if there is a way to present it or to, for us to, to go into it, like let's attack parking minimums and see where that lands us or offsets from the front setback. Or heights, like would, would that be helpful, Taylor, or, or is it? Because I had a hard time going through it as well, because it was like
It was really difficult to go through.
In a different language, basically, right? It's so hard to understand.
And the, the crux of it, Yi Ching, to your point, is in those three tables. There's a table of uses, a table of dimensional requirements and a ta- table of parking requirements. And those three tables capture the crux of a lot of the really critical decisions that govern.
Yeah, so like what Michael Wayne has been trying to convince us is, hey, what, what kind of decisions do you want to make about parking minimums? Or how, how tall should these buildings be? I think he kept prodding us and no, but we didn't, we didn't come up with an answer.
Well, that's why I thought we would have a group discussion about the three tables. Because when you look at each one of the north, let's just, let's just say we're doing the, the, the North Main Street rezoning. The, the north, last time we saw North Main Street, GBD two and three was going to be combined into one multi-use dash one district, and it was going to have sub-districts in it where we would have the opportunity in each of those three tables to do some fine tuning of what's permitted in the whole MU one to control things like height and setback and dimensional, well, and use, right? Well, height and setback and use, actually, for each of the sub-districts that we identified, which I believe you know, we started with seven, I think we're down to four, Taylor, but again, the clarity is important. And so that's a thing that we can focus on. But again, the clarity is important. Um, and so that's a thing that we can focus on. With regards to the three A, um, what we need to focus on is, um, a good acceptable model of the development standards. If someone comes into any one of our three A districts, um, and says, I'd like to build this. And we can point to the development standards and say, fine, you can build this as of right with site plan review from the planning board. Um, um, so that's what the development standards that you sent us from Brookline are, which is an incredibly impressive document.
Right. Did, did, I guess they're called design. We, we can call them, we should call them criteria as opposed to guidelines, I think.
I think the word they use is standards.
Oh, okay. Um.
But, and it's all comes down to the.
Like a whole different animal. Like I, I don't, I don't know that I would feel comfortable writing that. I mean, I think there's an art to writing those things.
Oh, absolutely. And I was amazed.
And I would, I would, I would feel more comfortable saying, Michael, can you incorporate stuff from Brookline as it makes sense according to your judgment? I, I'd feel more comfortable with that than trying to write something. Any of us trying to write something from scratch.
Taylor, am I right in assuming that it is not the idea that we're going to write from scratch? Design standards for the three A, we're going to take some, um, respectable submissions that have already been submitted to the state, namely Brookline.
Right. Brookline has, has, I guess they've got two preservation planners. They've got a huge budget. Um, and they know how to write this stuff.
Right. And they paid a consultant to do a really good job. And I think there's, um, an opportunity here. And Nick, what you're saying, I agree with it. Michael can come in and help us identify the aspects of that that are directly applicable. But again, the tables of dimensional and parking and uses are the things that, that's where the rubber hits the road with planning board decisions.
I agree. And really different from Brookline, which is so much more urban than we are.
Right, right. So I, I guess that's why I'm focusing on the design standards and not necessarily the, um, the stuff about parking and what can go where and all that.
Build the building first and then design the building. You have to know what size box you can work with before you can.
And, and if you don't lower parking standards, then you lower, um, the opportunity to, um, create buildings that you can fit on that property.
I think specifically on the number of units per acre.
Right. So, um, I'm thinking that the four of us, I mean, we cannot go through a forty-page document in a meeting. That's untenable. Um, and I haven't even had a chance to look at what, what the final product was.
Taylor, what's most valuable feedback you can get to get this done by Friday? What are like priority areas that you know you're going to get stuck on if you don't know what we want?
Well, I think, I think going, I, I mean, there, there is a lot here. So it, so if we can pick specific topics to discuss, so if we want to discuss design standards, we can do that. If we want to discuss parking, we can do that. But these are all decisions that, that we have to make. We have, you know, again, Michael or Emily are going to be the people who are ultimately going to be writing them. But we need an opinion first to say, you know, we are comfortable with, I'm just throwing out a number here, point seven five parking spaces in this section. I, we, we are comfortable with forty-foot buildings with sixty-five special permit here.
That's why I was staying focused on the tables. Cause that's where all those decisions are reflected. Can we start with the first table?
I wonder if we'll get lost there because I think that that's some of the more primary spots that we need to concentrate on are Main Street and Skilling's. That whole corner is where a lot of our density is going to depend on. We, I think a lot of people were saying, hey, we want to get out of CBD and put the density near Skilling's and
Right.
Maine. Um, so therefore we have to look at that. And, you know, I think Michael kept prodding us saying, okay, right now it's two, two parking spots per unit. You, in order to get that density that you need to make it so that MBTA three A works for you, um, meaning really low density CBD and low density, whatever else places, you need to look at that specifically. And the number of, um, floors, the number of stories that you can, you can live with as well as the number of parking minimums.
Yeah. So this table that you have in front of us comes out of our current zoning and you'll notice that GBD two and three are not present, that they've been removed. And there was the way this was delivered to the planning board on the subsequent page, there was a chart that showed for the one, two, three, four sub-districts of MU one. Um, what would we want? And this is where I wanted the planning board to go through and share their opinions about what these things should be. And the way that the structure of the zoning bylaw right now is, um, for instance, if you look at, on the, the second sheet that's visible here, the fourth line down says minimum yard adjacent to SCI and residential districts. Um, and, uh, and I'm assuming that means side yard, um, and rear yard because I don't know. Um, and then adjacent to other districts, right? So that is where I put a lot of time into trying to think what the numbers would be and filling this out. And I thought that everybody did that and that this would be coming before us now to see what everybody said.
Is this the word document that's online that has everyone's comments on it?
Yes.
Is, is, am I looking at the right thing?
Well, I don't know. I haven't seen anything that has everyone's comments on it. I've seen one thing that has some feedback, the very first thing we saw. That had some comments from Michael Wang.
Right. But then, then, uh.
Yeah, you are probably looking at the right thing. I'm just looking at the PDF version of it. So I don't have the comments.
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
I'm sorry. So we put our comments on there. Do we just only see our comments? Cause I only saw my comments. I didn't see anybody else's.
I know. I would, I'm not seeing any comments.
I can see Carrie. You have to click on, uh, a little.
What are you, are you looking at the screen or did you open up a document, Nick?
I opened up a document. It, it's a link that I've saved up on my Chrome.
Yeah.
From, that was sent out initially to us to make the comments and, um.
Taylor, do you have a version of that?
E Ching made several comments and Carrie is on here. Um, but I, I can't tell, uh, who, who did the red line, um, changes.
Um.
It, it, looking at the most recent document and focusing on the tables. Because as I said, those, that's, the, the tables articulate in numbers what we're trying to do. And then the language.
Recommendation would be Taylor? That we look at the tables? Cause there, there are a lot of things when we looked at the maps, right? Where we were like, look, we can work with these numbers and the, the locations of the overlay. If say the liver-shaped Lake Street areas, um, increased by density a little bit and the Skilling's and the Main Street area were sort of the highest density point. And it like got thin along, um, the west side of Main Street and then, you know, increased again or whatever it was, right? So there were like, you know, conducting a music score with various, you know, crescendos and, and stuff. And so if we could look at that, and I, I think it would be helpful if people understood where, where these MU I, you know, E one spots are. Cause looking at this table, I don't think anybody's going to be able to visualize that, Sally. I can't hear you.
I agree with you, E Ching. We need a map in front of us to do this exercise. We need a map of the sub-districts. And we need to look at the dimensional tables to start with. Um, we did, we do need to go through the use tables because the document that was originally provided to us gave us some opportunities for new uses, which I commented.
Okay. So, but if we're looking at MBTA three A, we're looking really at housing right now. So we're looking at how many units can be in various districts per, per acre. So we're looking at.
Looking at MBT three, MBTA three A.
Yes.
And we want to look at.
Parking minimums and height.
But it's for all three A districts. Like we need a separate grid instead of just the MU one broken out into those four columns. It would be a table of dimensions and, and, um, and well, it wouldn't be parking because, well, no, it would be a table of dimensions and a table of parking that shows in these, in these specific MBTA three A locations, this is what's acceptable.
It might al- almost be easier if we just looked at a Google street view of, of the particular areas we're thinking about because again, going back to Skilling's and Main Street, are we comfortable with, you know, point seven five extending the parking minimums from CBD to point seven five there with a four-story max? You know, is that, is that sort of what we're comfortable with? Or are we going to continue with what is the underlying two, you, two units per, two, two parking spots per unit? Which is, it's not going to give us the density that we need.
No, it's not tenable. And I think that the operating assumption all along has been to lower the parking requirements on what used to be GBD two and three and is now MU one.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Can we talk about that? Is that, is that the policy decision that you need?
Do we need to, do we need to make that decision now? I mean, that sounds like a kind of.
We've been talking about this for a, a year now.
The answer is yes, Nick.
He has to write them by Friday.
The answer is yes. We have to decide this now. And we've been, as E Ching said, talking about this for a long time and we haven't been able to sit down and look at the actual data points that guide.
Lead us through your thoughts, Sally. Show us your.
Well, all right. Let me find. So what happened when I first looked at this is I was completely overwhelmed and I couldn't even figure out how to use the track changes thing at first. So I just printed out the whole thing and I wrote all my thoughts down. And then I went back into track changes and I submitted my changes to Nick in track changes. So I did a huge amount of work on paper, looking at the numbers. And I thought that what Taylor would show us is all our comments.
I did not fill this chart in because I don't feel like I have.
All right. Well, so let me see, let me find what I, uh, Taylor, if you put up what we all sent, maybe my notations will be there. Otherwise, you know, I'll look for my.
The document that I've shared, Sally, has everyone's comments in it. Everyone who said everything is in this, is in this document.
I obviously am missing this and I'm not seeing comments on your screen. Can you?
No, they're typed out. It looked, now just looks like that's how it started. He incorporated.
New document now.
Okay. Well, so this, this will start with dimensional requirements. The page that we're on does not show, um, the three A overlay districts. It shows the existing underlying zoning for everything except GBD two and three. And when you scroll down to the next page, there's the new breakouts for GBD two and three. And this is what we would be proposing as the underlying zoning. And then you would have for MBTA three A, you would either have the same underlying zoning or you would have either a separate table or notes to the table that say, if you're proposing to do multifamily as of right in this location, this is what applies. And that's how it's structured in our zoning bylaws is, is they have footnotes that describe if, if you're going to do this, this applies. Um.
Sally, are these your numbers? The rears your?
No, no, I'm, I, 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 oh God, hang on.
These are Michael Wayne's numbers.
So, but Taylor, when you say that you sent to us, um, I'm really sorry to be such a pain in the neck here, people. Um, when you, when you say that you sent to us the revised document with all of the planning board, um, uh, trying to get to my exit full screen. There.
What was the date, uh, for the?
Correct.
Do we move up so that?
For, for, for that, um, the revised document?
Um, I'm trying to, oop, W two, hmm. For the, for the new W, you, um, districts? Can you go down? Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm controlling this. MU one. Okay. So W two, E two and E three.
Would get one treatment. E four, E three and E four would get one. There is, first of all, this chart, and this is what I put in my markup. W four doesn't exist. No, it does exist. Excuse me. It was east four. It was, there was an E four that doesn't exist. So needing the, needing the map in front of us is helpful.
Okay. So Skilling's and Maine would be E one and W one. Is that correct?
I'm just going to try to find Taylor's email.
I think yes.
Yeah, I'm looking for the email.
Okay. So if we could look at that and it can, can you go down a little bit? I'm just trying to mark where that column is. Okay. So you're saying if it's a residential twenty-foot minimum, so like a two-story and then if it's mixed use, it's also twenty, two-story, twenty feet. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
So I, yeah.
Setback. I'm sorry.
These are setbacks.
Cindy, is there a floor, a height? There it is. Okay. So if it's residential only, it would be three stories. If it's mixed use, it's four and a half. Is that, is that what Michael's suggestion is?
That is, that's Michael's suggestion, yes.
Underlying zoning right now?
Uh, no, it's different than the underlying zoning.
Okay. So four and a half stories with mixed use as a bonus for having, 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 um, detail at the bottom. Is that okay with you all? At Skilling's and Maine.
So it, it combines with the maximum building height. Um, so here you say height in, I thought it was height in stories and height in feet.
There isn't a feet here. I think the feet.
There was up above.
CBD is what? Like?
It depends on the, on the, on the zone or on the sub-zone, but it's forty, forty feet or sixty feet special permit.
Four and a half stories at forty feet is, is not, is, it would be, the floor heights would be too small. So when you do a mixed use, then you probably get a bump in height.
Right. So I, I think four and a half with, uh, so, okay. So it, yeah, uh, that's okay. I mean, residential three, I think is definitely the max for me. And then the incentive for mixed use, I think that seems, that seems okay. I hesitate on the front yard part, but I don't know if we're going there yet. I think we're thinking about maximum height.
Yeah. And that's for both sides. So it's like near, on the other side, on the west side too, abutting the, um, town-owned land and then to the right, abutting the, um, high school.
First of all, Taylor, can we see the comments from the planning board, the version of this document that shows all the comments visible? And can we also have a look at the, um, new MU one map that shows the areas that are labeled west to east? No, they're backwards in this chart. East, I always think from going from the south up. I don't know why. East one and west one is a district. Um, W two is a district, W three is a district and east two and east three. Oh, no. Oh, you're putting east two and three together. Okay. So that was a decision that was made that I wasn't even sure I had, we had walked through how we were going to create these four columns. Because when you put some of these things together, you're combining some things that.
East two and east three are the really narrow lots on the east side with the single-family housing and duplexes. So that, that's sort of the, is the like a little, little greener, granular building.
Yeah, that's the, that's the Fells Hardware. That's the side, not the Fells Hardware, excuse me, the Fells renovation side of Main Street. Thank you, Taylor. Right.
Yeah. This is, this is, this is E. This is E, uh, E one, E two, E three.
Right.
W one, W one here, W two, W three.
Right, right, right. So east one backs up to the park view.
Sorry. This is, this is E, this is, sorry. I said that incorrectly. W one, W two, W three, W four.
Right. East one backs up to Skilling's Field and the Parkhurst. East two backs up to a residential neighborhood. And east three abuts residential neighborhoods, right?
Right. So if we could go back to what Carrie and I were talking about, so it's east one and west one. So those are the two highest density is what a lot of people were agreeing to, um, near the high school and abutting the town property on the, on the west side. So.
And so how do we turn that into a number?
Yes. So we're talking, if you do residential in MBTA three A zoning, it would be up to three stories. But if you put mixed use, you can do four and a half is what Michael Wang put in there. And we're talking about whether or not you might agree with that.
Right. So again, I gotta look at the header of the column, which is on the previous page, but the, the right.
I got stuck is I, I don't know what the density will be. You know, it's sort of like, we need sort of like a unit generator.
I think Michael did do that. I think Michael did do that when he.
Tall town. I know, I'm just saying, as we play with it, it'd be nice to sort of have a ticker on the side that's like.
Right.
This density.
Well. So I'd like to just focus it on on height and building height and stories. Because um.
Yeah, so that's what we were talking about. So three stories and four and a half stories. As the highest density at the MBTA three eight stuff. Like, would that be acceptable to you? Four and a half with mixed use? So that is a bump up. If you added um more retail at the bottom.
I mean, that would be some of the tallest buildings in town.
It would be the tallest buildings in town.
But it is, it is smaller than what's by right or what's by right in the North Court, which is sixty feet.
Right.
So it is actually less.
There's no height here, Taylor, so I don't know.
Because height comes after stories.
Is it on the next page?
No, height comes like you 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 decide how many stories you do and then that determines the height of a building.
So an easy way for me to think about it, Sally, is it's about ten feet per for. Okay?
Well, it's not about ten feet because what happens with buildings now is that.
Yes, so then you can just put a cap on it. You can say then at four and a half feet, you can only build up to forty five. Or fifty, whatever it is. So you can put a cap on it afterwards, right? But we're just talking about. The highest dent highest height beyond the CBD, is that okay for you? We have to start somewhere.
We do, yes. All right. So let's assume that we're going to limit residential structures in. Let's just start with the right hand column here, which is. East and west one, right? And we're going to say if it's a residential only building, it can be three stories, no more. Right? And if it's a mixed use building, it can be four and a half stories.
Right, so it incentivizes people, developers. Mixed use building.
Right, it gives them another half story of residential plus it gives them the retail.
Yes, and we really, I think that corner would be really a key corner to have extended retail.
Right. So then I would, so if you're looking for the planning board to say, can you live with four, three and four point five? In east one and west one, and can we live with? See, I don't see the column headers now again, I keep.
So the so the quietest portions of it would be W three and W four, right? Isn't that true? It's it's the most residential portion of the MBTA three A that we have. So at at max, you can do two and a half, which is typical residential all around Winchester. And if you add a mixed use, you get a bump of a story.
So the two that say residential three stories um to the left, that's west two? Is that what that is? Okay, and then there is. And then uh west three and. There is no west four, is there, Taylor?
Yeah.
That's what's confusing me. There's no west.
There is a west four.
I am completely confused. I would like.
So then the most quiet parts are west two, west three and west four. Cause it but abuts very residential.
Right, and this is where.
So, yes, so then if we did maximum of two and a half with a bump, do we want it all along? Do we want all the the retail, do we want to incentivize retail at all three west sides? It's a question, or do you want it quiet quieter at certain?
In my opinion, I agree with everything you said, E Ching, about concentrating density and concentrating incentives. For retail at the lower half of what is currently GBD two. But I do think that Michael's vision of these um interspersed vitality of first floor commercial. Is great along here. The question, and I'm pointing with my mouse to the to the west side of of North Main Street. Um, you know, from Clark all the way up to the Woburn line and saying. Yes, I think it's fine to incentivize commercial, but we should be very careful not to make it too tall. And for some of these lots, they these are not deep lots. The lots in, let's see, one, two. I can't tell the difference between those two colors. I'm only seeing three, three zones on the east side.
Yeah, it's just a bad, it's just a bad coloring.
All right, so there are four zones. I just, if if the lot's too shallow, I don't think that the building should be too tall. And I don't know how you do that in zoning.
Well, we were also talking about having the um offsets from the front be very minimum. So so you push all the building to the front and then have the parking or whatever in the back so that it becomes quiet towards the neighborhoods.
Okay, so when we go back to the tables, and I agree with that, when you.
I have a little tension with that though, because then I think you're making it look very urban. I think at least like a three foot setback so you can plant. Or do some sort of a buffer, you know, I think that neighborhood feel you lose if you're sort of, you know, right on the sidewalk.
So then we would look at the setbacks in chart. You know, we have to turn our opinions into numbers.
So you you sort of want the offset like as like um like an object?
Do you mean setback or offset?
You don't want those setbacks, sorry.
I know you don't want it at the bat. Like, I completely understand the buffer between the residential, but I also think when you're walking around to the front. The feel of that neighborhood changes if you put the buildings right at the right at the property border. I think I don't know if it's convention or if we're doing, you know, I mean, a three foot planter seems like it's worthwhile, you know, something to sort of make sure.
Yeah, so you could do like a um.
What did Michael recommend?
Offset, but it's like zero to ten feet. So you can choose to have like a outdoor seating or something like that in the front. And I remember him doing a rendering where there was a.
Yeah, you see, here it is. Mixed use would be zero to ten and residential would be zero to fifteen.
But could it be like three to fifteen? So we're definitely.
You don't want it right straight on.
I just think that feel, you know, as far as sort of, you know, walk, I just think that visually putting the buildings right at the edge. Makes it feel more urban, whereas if there there's a few feet of the green strip or some planter or something. A bench or something, it just feels more residential and neighborhood.
Well, one of the ways to um improve the streetscape. Even including having buildings that go out to the sidewalk line is um. Uh, with first floor. Uh, commercial um and the transparency of windows that we just talked about. And the way that the the doors are stepped in or whatever.
And street trees and bump outs that allow plantings. Like, I I know, I'm just saying as far as the, I I maybe I'm the only one that thinks that I'm happy to be voted down. But I I do want to make a case for.
Right.
Everything not being at the property line.
Right. I think that some of our most vital streetscapes in in town are the ones downtown where the stores are at the front. And it is.
Downtown, it feels like down.
Yes.
But we're trying to extend the downtown up North Main Street. That is what we're trying to do.
People that live up North Main Street want to feel like they live in the downtown, though. I think they want a little.
Why we made separate subzones. And so we have.
Residential areas. I'm not, I like the skillings area, it might be nice to have them right up front. You know, those are those become. Shops or cafes or whatever services, but I think where it becomes very residential, keeping that green feel is is going to be beneficial. Just a thought.
Yeah. I went, I wonder if you give the developer that kind of um. Option zero to ten or is if it's three to ten? Um, I don't know, I just I just worry that those lots are so shallow that it's very difficult for them to um be able to. Accommodate their parking and everything that that we're demanding of it to to work.
But economic viability goes by square footage and if we're lowering parking restrictions. Or requirements, excuse me, and if we're trying to encourage the construction of more housing. Um, and we're willing to incentivize first floor commercial, I would not require. A minimum three foot strip in front of buildings. But I but I would require all the other things that we're talking about in terms of access to the parking. Um, not, you know, minimizing the number of curb cuts on Main Street, all the other factors that go into it.
Yeah, I tend to agree, Sally. I'm sorry, Carrie, I just I just don't feel like I think that a lot of people will. Be incentivized enough, I because we the zoning has changed at CBD two and three, this um or GBD. Um, that there's so little development that. The zero to ten allows someone to determine that kind of feel.
But that's where I want to see the density too. If we do end up containing those buildings because they're smaller and we're not as. Um, sort of, you know, lenient with restricting parking, you know, with not requiring as much parking to preserve the quality of the neighborhood, do we still hit the density? Because I think cars on the street and buildings right at the curb are are not nice to live next to. So I think, you know, we want to think about if we're bringing density closer to downtown, can that peter out and we have three families instead of, you know, more units?
Well, that's why.
Mention, something that's worth to mention about the setbacks here is that um. Is that E E two, E three, W three, W four are not a part of the overlay? So this would all be, this would all need to go through um through a design review permitting process. So if at the time you thought you still think three is the right. Is the right number, you would be able to work with the developer to get three. Now, that won't necessarily be the case for E one and and W one or W W two. But it will be for those areas higher up.
That's a helpful reminder because again, I'm also like, you know, very willing to think like, do we, we don't have enough street trees up there. So maybe the extraction as we make space in the site, you know, like maybe we do some something with the street landscaping and we don't affect the building size, but. That's helpful. Thank you, Taylor.
That's that is helpful to maybe put us on track too, because W two is what we need to be looking at as well. If we could look at the map of W two really quick, Taylor. So everybody can see. So it's it's the quiet part. Up to uh, what is that water or?
That's up to. That's swat.
But on the la on the west side, so the orange, the orange part. So I mean, we could, we would not complete, we could just forego the um incentive for. Uh, commercial and just do residential. I mean, we don't have to do that everywhere, right?
Yeah, I agree with that and I think.
I agree with that too.
Would you though, because Swanton is such a nice cross, e- especially with a park across the street. It seems like it would be a fair fairly vital place to grab a coffee and then go to the park.
Now, if we don't give the incentive, will they still have the option of putting the commercial in if they want to?
I guess there's no ins, if there's no incentive and they have the same height limit.
Yeah, they'll be, they can, because it's mixed, it's 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 mixed use by rights, so they can, but.
I mean, right now, there's a store there that sells blinds right in the corner of uh of W two.
Right.
Right.
And then across is Andrea's Pizza, I think.
That's the corner of Swan, right?
But uh.
Um, it seemed like from last meeting, Diap really thought that that was a vital part of his neighborhood with the Andrea's Pizza part and to to to. But we're not talking about that part yet. We're talking about across the street.
Those are all stores.
What Nick?
On W two, they're all stores. On that corner of uh.
Right.
Uh, right where the arrow is.
The country store.
The dairy barn. So cute. And then that this is that far left is offices, right?
Right, I think that gives uh that area some vibrancy.
If we do incentivize retail, you're saying?
Well, I'm wondering if they if they would. I mean, would they still be able to have those stores there if we didn't do any incentivization or 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 is it?
Yes, they could, but there is no incentive to build housing.
Okay.
So my understanding is that um it's been very difficult for developers in Winchester. To find tenants for required first floor commercial. Which is.
Better use tables because that's just an issue nationwide.
Right, so there was opportunity, and we have it on our list of things to do to go down the use tables. And agree on additions and deletions for each of these. Four or these clusters of subzones on North Main, right? Um, uh, but i- if we don't incentivize. Commercial. I believe that from a developer's point of view, it's more financially beneficial to have all residential. Okay, so if the goal is to in certain places have street level commercial. It is those locations where we would incentivize it. And the question is, is height the best incentive? I I don't know of any others, so um. Uh, then we would have to decide, again, looking at our map, where we would be willing to incentivize. Um, commercial development and uh like the strip that we were just looking at is the orange here, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I would say, yes, we do want to incentivize commercial development there. But because it's such narrow lots, we have to be very careful about the other standards. Or or dimensional requirements that we do, like how far from the back line can the?
So Michael Wayne said for W two, so this particular area, his suggestion was residential three by right. And then four um with multi, multi use.
Okay.
So right now, there is a residential building at three big floors. Um, in that district, yeah, that one.
Right. And so if we did, if we did, and actually Ben has a first floor commercial, but it's been hard for them to populate, but I believe it's it's rented out now. Um, so you're having to visualize this entire strip being up to four stories high. If the person comes in with a first floor commercial, is that right?
Yeah. And three stories by right.
And what I would say is, I'm not opposed to that as long as the other dimensional requirements. Specifically with regards to the side of the lots that immediately abuts residential. Has very clear guidelines about building stepbacks and building setbacks. Stepbacks being an upper.
So the rear setback is at twenty foot minimum. I mean, that's pretty decent. Maybe you could you could say more if you want, but the.
Well, when we go to our table for layout of of off-street parking, is twenty feet the right dimension?
Yeah, you can you can do a lane and then park, I think.
Right, okay. And this is where it would have been great to have Michael here. Um, because now we're getting down to the brass tacks of exactly what numbers to put in our tables and we haven't had this kind of a a working. Session that we need.
Yeah, I would I would tend to say it would be very nice to to incentivize retail on the bottom here and W.
And this is on, this is on west two and three?
Nope, just west two, just west two. So between Clark and the opposite of skilling, whatever that.
I think that's Canal, am I not? Is that Canal? I think so. Oh, maybe not. Actually, it's not Canal. Canal goes all the way down. I don't.
And. Someone remind me, so. I'm grasping for the the park, do we need to right now address the parking requirements for the commercial piece?
Not yet. If we could maybe be okay with the height. I feel like that is the most um obvious for a lot of people.
By the draft on Friday, because I know somebody was had raised the concern, a business owner, that one of the challenges is sort of making sure that there's enough parking. For some of the retail ventures, I want to consider. Do we solve that by Friday or do we solve that?
Well, we would solve it as part of this conversation by looking at the table of parking requirements.
Do we solve that by Friday?
Okay, gotcha.
Great, I'm sorry, E Ching, you said what? We have to do it by Friday?
By Friday, yeah.
Yes, right.
Okay, so what about you, Nick? What do you think about the three story residential? With an incentive for four and a half for W two, which is what we've been looking at, the orange sections.
Um, I'm just trying to get a sense of it. I I'm I'm sort of learning and listening um. I guess I. I, I guess I, 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 I I guess I kind of trust Carrie's opinion on height. Um, but it, I mean, I, I guess if, if, if we have to do that, um, I like, I like the three residential, four and a half incentivized, uh, retail, mixed use. And I guess
The same as the lower level. That's the same as what we did in, in, in East.
Oh. Oh, oh, okay, East, okay, East.
Oh, East one, is it four and a half? Um, yeah.
Isn't that what we said that East one and West one?
Maximum on this side, it's only four.
Oh, it's only four, okay. Um, so we're talking about West one? The gray?
No, West, we're talking about West two right now, which is the orange.
Okay.
And we're saying that if you do a residential only development, you can go up to three stories on here with no first floor commercial requirement. But if you want to put in first floor commercial, then you can go up to fill in the blank. And I'm not sure four and a half is right. I'm thinking three and a half is right.
Three and a half is pushing it, I think, but
Three and a half is the most I could accept.
And the half story is usually sort of like one of those, it's sort of like the top floor residential, right? It's not, you wouldn't use a half story in any way. It's not sort of like half basement, you know, like Tonsor Lounge style. That's not a half story.
N- n- no, it would be, it would be, um, either
Flat roof, but then it would have to stop in the front and then be a set, setback down. That, that's half. Or a pitched.
No, I'm sorry, E Ching, if, if it's a four-story building in the front with a flat roof, that's not a half story, that's a four-story building.
Right.
So if we limit this
If it's three and a half, then it could be a four-story in the front and then it stops short in the back or opposite, whatever you want, the, the the setback to be.
Oh, because you're averaging the building height?
Yes. Unless you, you did a design guideline, it says no pit, you know, no, no flat roofs.
Yep.
Well, and that's why I thought it was really great that what we have as an example, the really excellent form-based code that Brookline came up with for their analogous strip.
If we do, if we do nothing else, I think we should at least provide that to Michael Wang and say, Michael, just borrow from it. Um, as you, as you see fit, um, and
That's, that's what I thought too.
Be afraid to borrow liberally if, if it makes sense for us, because I think it's really well-written and I think that it, um,
Well, let's just talk about
I'm talking about the style. I'm not talking about the height. I'm not talking about the parking.
Let's talk about building style.
Right, right.
So it's in the Brookline.
So sooner rather than later, I think we should get that in the hands of Michael, so that he's not at the last minute being asked to kind of incorporate stuff, but, but he has some time to look at it and, and see what, see what he could do with it.
Yes. But in the meantime, we can come up with an opinion. So again, if we were going back to the map of the zones and we're talking about what would be the maximum number of stories in each zone if it was residential only? And what if any would be the incentive if they choose to put in first floor commercial in their development? And so
For two, I mean, could you do two and a half and then send to three and a half or is that too?
I mean, that, that is what is proposed here is for W three and W four, which is if you move up the, the green, yeah, the red and the green areas.
Great.
Two and a half, which is just typical residential height for, um, Winchester and then
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
If it's, if there's a first floor commercial, and I would agree with that, um, if trying to move the conversation along. And for this orange area, um, I would say, uh, three and maximum three and a half.
That, I don't think that's a very much incentive.
Well, it allows them to go from being a flat-roofed building to having a fourth floor under a gabled roof. Okay, with dormers that would allow them to have more rentable or saleable condo space on the top floor of the building.
I missed the section you're talking about, Sally.
So like right now, I'm talking about, um, West two orange. Okay, so we said West three, red and West four green, we would do two and a half as the all residential number of stories maximum. And for the red and the green, if you decide, if you asked, if you say you want to put in first floor commercial, we would incentivize it to mo, no more than three and a half. Right? And we, or, it, no. Three.
I think that's really tall for the
That's why I said three for the green and the red, but in the orange, um, you would incentivize it to three and a half. Is that right? Is that what we're saying?
You'd be losing half a story of residential if you did it that way.
Well, then we would incentivize it to four. But what, what did we?
Four, though.
I, I just, I don't want
That's what Michael Wang had put in, was the numbers, three for residential in the orange and four for multi-use.
Oh, I see.
Three and four, three and four, okay.
Oh.
And I would say the only place where I'm really not comfortable with four, I, I don't want, I don't think I want to see anything on the east side, even with first floor commercial, that's more than three and a half stories.
On the east side or west side?
East side or the west side?
On, on, I'm sorry, on the west side. On the west side, this is where I get so screwed up. On the west side, I just don't think I want to see anything taller than three and a half stories after you leave West.
I think three and a half is tall. I know I'm conservative about this, but that's, you know, it's, there's all this, it's shadow, I mean, it's tall. It's tall. That's, that would be the maximum and I would
If, if you say three, you're saying a flat roof and if you say three and a half, you're saying a gabled roof or a dormered roof or a hip roof.
Right.
You're giving, I actually, a little bit more incentive, but, um, Taylor's right, if you do two and a half by right and three and a half with multi-use, you're losing a whole story of, of residences.
That's, that's why we need the, the, um, units calculator. I need my ticker.
It's a de-incentivization, actually, to have retail. You're de-cent to the, de-deincentivizing retail.
So this is where in the Brookline document, they actually talk about the building, the roof forms that are permitted in each of these colored districts. This is our map.
Right, so you can force like a pitch.
Job with the roof forms and they, they do an excellent job with that.
You can force a pitch if the flat roof is your concern, that you don't want to see something that is city-like. You want a more village-like. I think that maybe that's, that's the term that you're, like, that's, that's sort of image, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, four and a half with a pitch possibly would be better than the three-story existing residential that, that's across from the park right now.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, I would
If, if we have really strong design criteria, then we can afford to have higher buildings.
Right. So the question is, moving up the east side, no, the west side of North Main Street from West one, which is in sort of a gray, warm gray, is where we said we would have the hu, the highest all-residential permitted height and the highest commercial incentive height, right?
Three and four and a half, yeah.
Right.
That's up to Clark. Yep.
And that, and, and, and that would apply also on East one, the whole green district. Well, it's not green, it's, it's, it's pale orange. Tan, whatever. And then, when you go up North Main Street, the concept was to incentivize commercial on the first floor and be very clear about how high you can go with residential and incentivized commercial. And what I heard Carrie say was, two and a half would be the, the maximum residential um, perhaps in the upper two sections, the red and the green. But in this middle section where it's more of a transitional experience anyway, and you're facing the, the park, that it could be residential of three stories or three and a half stories. Right? And then, if you wanted to incentivize commercial, I mean, you wouldn't go to four and a half stories because that's as
So Michael Wang had three, three by right and four with multi-use.
I can go, I can li- live with that.
That's for east.
Sorry.
That would be east for the, for the
No, no, that's West two.
West.
West, two.
West two.
So you're saying up to forty feet?
I don't know yet, we don't know yet, but you can say
Rule of thumb, ten foot per story.
I know, I know, but, but
I think we need that. Those are narrow lots, right? So I think if we don't have some height there, it also backs up to the park view, which is quite tall. And then it's that sort of open area that goes to the high school. So I don't think, you know, I think are we shadowing neighbors? Are we creating a wall feel before we enter a neighborhood, those sorts of things? And I think on that side, that, I think that would, I think that's kind of okay.
Well, and so what we're running into is, um, I think we all agree that East one and West one back up to, except for one lot, they back up to non-residential neighborhoods, okay? All right, so that's where we could do a Michael suggested
Three to four and a half.
Three to four and a half. And so I, I say, yes, let's put that out there as a working decision. And then you get to West two, which does back up to residential, and I wouldn't want to go any more than three and a half stories there and Taylor
Two and a half to three and a half.
In West, West West two and West.
West two, I'm saying, I'm saying we would, you'd start with two and a half for residential, three and a half for mixed use.
And you're saying for West two?
For West, well, that, that's what I'm hearing you.
Yeah.
Um, so, so just so you know, that's, that's what's recommended for the upper west side, so the, the pink and the green. That's, that's the two and a half, three and a half suggestion from, from Michael. And then for the orange part, he suggested a little bit more dense, three by right and then four with incentive. And we could say with four with incentive, but with a pitched roof.
With a pitched roof or with stepbacks? That's the fourth stor, fourth floor stepbacks.
Yeah, step back from where though? From Main Street?
From the Main Street, so you don't have this looming.
But then you have the looming in the neighborhood side.
No, not necessarily. It steps back, front and back, if that's the case. I mean, we can say
Which is a pitched roof.
If you have a pitched roof, it's, I mean, if you have a, if you have a design style that is attractive, then the height seems more tolerable.
That's right. That's right. You mitigate the, 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 the mass of the building with
So it's important for W two to have a pitched roof feel if we go to four stories.
For W two and for W, oh, if we go to four sto, yes.
Okay.
W two, yes, okay.
You're gonna mitigate that height with the roof. There.
And I think we want that feel kind of everywhere anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of do.
So then, um, that we would have the lowest permitted number of stories in the red and the green, which is West three and West four. Right? And the maximum height there that Michael had
Is two and a half and three and a half, but that's beyond the MBTA three A part, right?
I know, I'm, I'm just trying to do the base zoning.
Okay.
Because that's what, because this isn't a three A, so it is only base zoning. Right?
Yeah.
Or are you saying that you could do residential as of right all the way? Are we gonna make it residential as
No, 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 no. This is all special permit by now, right, Taylor? If we're gonna, W three and W four.
Yeah, so we're, we're discussing what would be by, by right.
Right. So if we just did W one, W two, I mean, W one, East one, and then W two. What is the gray area part of the MBTA three A?
No.
Okay, so we're done with that part, right? We're done with the MBTA three A by right stuff.
Yeah, yeah, the three A goes up to the circumference of the circle and that's why I said except for one lot.
Is, is, is that helpful, Taylor, for Friday?
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. This is, that, let's, let's keep cooking.
Let's keep going, okay. All right, so then, and E Ching summarized what we've said about the red and the green then?
So the red and the green was suggested by Michael, um, for residential two and a half stories and then mixed use three and a half stories.
And that applies all the way up to the Wilburn border.
Yeah.
Well, we can put it in there just to keep it rolling. But you know, a lot of this is, Michael did some really good visualizations and it's when we're presenting this to town meeting, it's actually putting the visualizations right there on the slide.
It doesn't seem like it's much change actually from, except for the setbacks. I mean, that, those, those street feel, like there's a little bit too much, um, like shiftiness in the building's placement to the site. And so what I think most of this will do is actually move it so that we get a start, we, we start to get a street skate
Yes.
At the front.
Right, a street line as he calls it.
Yeah.
It'll move, it'll move buil- buildings closer to the road, it'll move parking to the rear and overall heights remain roughly the same and uses will change.
Okay, so do we want to talk about, um, any of the other dimensions while, uh, uh, um, for these east side, excuse me, west side, um, uh, like side and setbacks and, and, or buffer setbacks from residential. I mean, that there's a line in the chart that says minimum yard adjacent to SCI or residential district in feet. And he left it blank. And I had proposed for W two. Oh, no, this is when I didn't understand that there was four, because I didn't, I couldn't see that.
Okay, so Sally, I think that the character change between, so we're just talking west side only, of West two, West three, West four. What Michael had proposed was that the character of them are similar in the setbacks of front, side and rear, except for that the orange, the part closer to the CB, GBD, um, CBD, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Would be slightly higher. So
But all the others
Everything else is the same. And I would agree with that, that this, this um, West two, the closest to the CBD should have a higher density and also because it faces the park, that it could be slightly higher by half of, half a story than the rest.
Right. Right.
And maybe the parking minimums are slightly different because it's farther from the center. For, for the rest of these guys, right? The, the pink and the green, the farther north. They, they might need more cars.
Well, okay, so when you go to the, the parking metrics, um, the CBD is point seven five per dwelling unit and one, and, and one parking space per thousand square feet of commercial. And if you go to the parking tables that Michael, um, I saw Michael provided. Uh, oh, here, okay, so here I can see it here. Um, yes, he, he said, put it at point seven five spaces per a thousand square feet and point seven five spaces for dwelling units across the entire North Main Street.
Uh-uh, no, except for, no. It's one, one parking space at E two and E three.
Oh, one parking space per dwelling unit. And if we incentivized, oh, and then one parking space per thousand square feet. And one, oh, I see the one, okay. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna allow one parking space per dwelling unit in E two
The gray area.
Oh, no, and three and four, but E two would be point seven five is what you're saying.
Me? No. No, it's one right now.
One all the way up the west side after you leave
You keep switching sides. No, we're talking east, east side. So east two is the gray area is one per unit.
And one per thousand. Okay.
And E three as well.
Okay, and that's because you're saying it's farther from Okay, and that's because you're saying it's farther from the center.
I mean, I made, I think that might be the reasoning and.
Yeah, it's a one mile walk. It's a mile from swamp, from, from cross.
However, on the west side, three and four, he put point seven five per dwelling unit and one, but he, I think his point was regionally, um, a lot of towns are now shifting it to zero minimum um, and actually putting a cap on the maximum parking spots, and it's left to the developer and the market to determine how many parking spots. And I know that like makes everybody crazy here, but that was, that was his emphasis was to keep, keep pushing it down, but.
So I see what he's proposed now, and I sanction what he's proposed as, um, something for us to put up on the wall and, and, and see how it works, um. I mean, yes, what he proposed, I would say, let's go forward with it and see.
Carrie, I know you have, um, a lot of concerns about the parking, so what, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm set, my son had a little asthma fix. Sort of lost a little bit of the last one. My thoughts with the parking are that the more residential the area, the more important is that we hit closer to one space per unit so that there is less on-street parking. That's what I'm thinking about. I don't want, and then we want to I just don't know if I have my head around the on-street parking opportunities, like, do we have to, what do we have to do to change overnight parking where it is now? I mean, obviously, I would love it if, you know, we just convert to bike, but reality is people are moving out with cars. That's it. I'm sorry I missed some of that. Okay, he's fine, but wait a minute.
And, and what is getting into Carrie is how are we going to do sort of a complete streets type of realization in North Main Street? Uh, and we can say, yes, let's put all the parking in the rear, let's have at least one bike lane somewhere. Um, and, and then let's manage on-street parking. Our select board is the commissioner of the streets, and so they will be the one who ultimately decides how much on-street parking there will be, right?
Right.
Um, after we're done, you know, closing up ridiculously long curb cuts and, um, creating bump outs for pedestrians and so on. So I think that, that achieves the goal. If you have the one per dwelling unit going up towards Woburn, um, and the point seven five per dwelling unit heading down towards skilling. Is that what you're saying?
Yep, that seems. Yeah, I don't know.
And on, and on the, and on the east side, the gray and the blue, you would have it be one per dwelling unit, but in the.
Well, on the west side.
No, I'm talking about the, so I was just talking about the west and saying that in the red and the green, it would be one, but now I'm gonna jump to the east, and I'm gonna talk about the, the gray and the blue, which is east two and east three.
Yep.
Right? And what I heard in the conversation was one dwelling unit per resident, I mean, one parking space per dwelling unit and point seven five parking space per thousand square foot of commercial.
I think that's sounds reasonable. Is that in conflict with what Michael put?
No.
Okay, yeah.
No, E Ching, am I right? That it is not in.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, he put point seven five per one thousand for all of them except for east two and three.
Okay.
East two and three is one, for whatever reason.
Right, and what. And, and what he's not recognizing that's coming out of this conversation is that the closer that we get to cross street, that green distance and that blue area, we're thinking that we should be one parking space per dwelling unit because it's a mile walk to town. Is that what we're saying?
Okay, yes. I think though, the, if, when you do bigger developments like this, and we've seen that when, um, the, this, the CBD permits come before us, that a lot of these developments are making the fluid, the fluidity of the attachment of the parking spot to the unit a lot more fluid. I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly.
They're uncoupling it.
Uncoupling it and then giving residents, residents a lot more flexibility in how they want to do that, um. So, I don't know, you know, there, there were some business owners who came before us and said that one thousand, one per one thousand was just real, way too restrictive for them to, to be able to lease their businesses.
Right, that was, that's on the, on the commercial side.
Right.
And I agree with all the way up the corridor, keeping it at point seven five, all the way up from skillings all the way up to cross for commercial.
I wish we could stage this so that we could see how water field plays out, because I'll be interested to see how many of those flexible public spaces out front end up getting used by the residents. But we won't know.
Be like five years from now.
I know, let's just put, stick a pin in this whole conversation.
So can we, can we just say that we have addressed an, a, a, a tentative position on parking and number of stories for these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven zones that used to be GBD two and three?
Do we want to vote on them or like solidify that?
I, I think that it, um, probably would be helpful if, oh, Carrie?
We're just voting to make a recommendation though, right?
I don't know, Taylor, what do you need from us?
I don't think a vote is necessary. I actually don't think a vote is a good idea because this is a fluid conversation. I mean, we have a meeting with Z-Rac tomorrow and they might come back and say, you know, we're opposed to this, or we want to add this, there's, there's no reason to vote tonight.
Okay, so. They're gonna be really valuable input for this.
Right, so I think that's really helpful. So now when we go to the next table, we did parking and we did stories, right? And we talked about step backs and we talked about setbacks, and those are all documented. Well, setbacks are documented in the draft table of dimensions. And so the last thing that we get to is the table of uses, Taylor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I had done a ton of work on looking up additional uses, and then I saw that in the principal use regulations section of the draft that you sent us to work on, that there was also some sort of pasted in other choices later. Yeah, you're, that's at the bottom of your screen now. So I, this is why I wanted to see the comments of the planning board, and I don't know where to find those. Um, but I had some thoughts about what would be good and not good in the different uh, sub-districts. And I was wondering if the planning board had also expressed thoughts and where we could find those.
The thing that will be most helpful for me, just so that you all know, as you start your conversation, is I'll let you know how we came up with these, and so these are, these are based off of new nearby cities and towns who have recently updated their use tables for similar business districts. So that's how we came up with, with, with this list. Um, I, we do believe that it's missing things. We do believe that it's including things that we don't want. Um, and I think, I think that it's, that it will be great to know more so than what's, what is, what, what should and shouldn't be included in each sub-district, that is important. But the most important thing to know for me as we have a conversation is which uses should be allowed along the whole, the, the whole district rather than in sub-districts.
And is it specifically this list of uses that you have on the screen in front of us now, running from motor vehicle down to convenience store at the bottom of your screen? Or there's more, right, there's a whole bunch more.
There is, yeah, oh, yeah, there's more.
Okay, so this list was, that I was looking at was somewhat duplicative of things that we already have in our table of uses.
Um, that's correct.
But you're looking for, these are the ones that you're concerned about, either because they're missing or because the vision of this being a more, um, vital commercial area and or of, of dense residential area, these would conflict with that. Is that what you're saying?
Think of this as, as, uh, there's nothing missing from it. Like, it's so, think, think, think of it as there's nothing missing from it, but taking this as, as the baseline, what should we add and what should we, 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 we remove? I understand that it might, it's a little bit different. There are some things that are from current, there aren't some things that are from current, but
This is what you're presenting to us as, as what you need feedback on, regardless of what the existing table of uses says.
Well, it's like our existing uses have been really restrictive, and it almost seems like when we look at this, it's, it's the things to take out, actually, right?
Like, a lot of red line here.
I, I think it's interesting, my, my feeling about, uh, when I look at the downtown. Well, uh, there's a storefront that's taken up by a landscaping company.
Right, no, no, we're not talking about CBD right now, Nick, we're talking.
No, but, but I'm, I'm just thinking about what's desirable, and I think that what makes it, I was in Lexington recently with the kids, uh, with their karate and what, what I just noticed was the vibrancy. Um, and I think what, for me, one of the main things that creates vibrancy are the food offerings.
But the vibrancy in Lexington is also a function of the stationary store that closed and the art galleries and the clothing stores and the bookstores, jewelry stores. I mean, and those things aren't listed here. That's why I was wanting to know what, to Nick, to Taylor's point, what do we want to take out? But also, can we look at any of the current GBD one and two prohibitions that we would reverse for MU one? Right?
I'm surprised to see kennels including veterinary offices, because I think we feel very differently about dog daycare and a vet office, but.
That we do, and I, what I put in my comments was any of these animal uses would not include overnight boarding.
Right.
So that takes out.
That's still dog daycare. I mean, I don't know if any of these spaces is big enough for us to have to worry about that.
Oh, but before you came on, Carrie, there was somebody who really wanted to do hair, uh, to, to fur cutting.
That was right when I started.
Oh, okay. So it, it, it does get.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It's like an interesting collection of things, like individual services and vet and daycare are so different.
I would not mix, um, overnight dog boarding with any other dog or pet related uses, because overnight means that there's barking.
Right.
And the same thing with daycare, there, there's barking.
Anyway, so besides, besides being able to parse that, the flea market's an interesting.
I'd like to, I'd like to incentivize bakeries, restaurants.
I don't know if there's ways to incentivize it, but just allow them, because it wasn't even allowed in, in GBD two.
That's what I'm saying. Go back to the original table of uses for GBD two.
No, we don't have to. I think we just need to just take out the, the very few things that we don't want.
All right, well, I would like to see less motor vehicle repair, sales and rental.
That was a strong message from the master plan, enough with the car places.
Right, so I would say that they're just not permitted on GBD two and three, which is now MU one, all sub-districts. Unless you guys want to have a different opinion.
I, I mean, I, I, I go to them a lot.
Yeah, I've used them all.
Same, but there's lots of them.
Yes. But I don't, I, they will be, um, they will be, oh, gosh, I can't think of the not offensive term, the, the the, they will be grandfathered in, that's, that's not the right term, um.
Right.
Um, but, but that would not incentivize people to change them if, if they're necessary and they're actually generating business, but.
Well, what it means is if somebody currently has a motor vehicle repair, sales or rental in any of these sub-districts, and they want to, um, renovate and e- expand that business, they would not be able to do so, um. And if they want to repurpose the land and keep it in their own ownership, they would have to comply with what is permitted in that stretch of land, right?
Well, you could do it similarly to the kennels, where you say the planning board shall be the SPGA for car stuff.
Oh, I see, make it special permit for motor vehicle repair, sales, rental and special permit for all, um,
Right.
dog and pet related uses.
Right.
What you're saying?
Well, that's what, that was what, was in the kennels as, as a, as a last sentence about that. Which needs to make sense also for motor stuff.
And you didn't put grooming in here, so I, I don't know where that fits, but.
Do you understand what I'm just trying to say though? For, so for car, auto issues, you can also put the planning board as the SPGA.
SPGA. I would sanction that, others?
What does SPGA stand for?
Special Permit Guarantee.
So let's, let's just start with that, that the top row, where it says motor vehicle repair, sales and rental, all seven columns, it would be special permit. And then, I'm curious to know, Taylor, what is a catering service?
I mean, that would be like what Lucia's trying to do, actually, um, on Main Street, which is have a service to, to do all the prep and stuff. They're, they're using that formerly pet store as part of their.
They were just making a bakery that was.
They are, but they're using, they're using that as a prep area for a lot of their other stuff.
It's just a kitchen without, without a dining room.
So is it a takeout place?
Nope, that's different. Takeout is its own thing. This is just a kitchen without a dining room, without a service center, it's just a kitchen.
Well, I think he's proposing in his building permit to put in a small coffee shop in the front.
Okay, well.
That's why I'm confused about catering service. To me, that's not an enlivening thing. You can do that in.
But it would be, I mean, I, we need so many of those things in our, the, the parties that are taking place at the right, like farm and, and whatever, like.
Right, but you don't need those to be right on the edge of the street.
For a town. Um, true, it, we could shove them over to, um, Fulton Street, but I feel like the more restrictive we are about these things, the less vibrancy we will get, because there's so little investment in that, on that street anyway.
So to your point, we would just say yes, all the way across the table.
It's really.
For that line.
We should be more lenient than, than being restrictive.
And Taylor, what's the, what's the logistical impact of up to, um, five thousand and more than five thousand, and on the next line, up to ten and more than ten? What is the cutting line, cutting, cutoff?
So you get to, you get to decide, you, you, you use dimensions to decide whether or not it's, it's allowed. So if you want a small catering service, you can say yes. If you want a large catering service, you can say no.
Or a special permit.
Or a special permit.
And when you say large, it means there's gonna be more trucks backing in with supplies and delivery trucks heading out to people's parties and all that stuff, right? I mean, it's, it's the same with both.
I'm practically speaking, it's hard to see who would apply for that. I think that is definitely something, you know, this under five, up to five thousand squared feet that seems, you know, that you might have a bakery in the front, like, what's the one that's in East Boston that everyone uses, the, I can't remember the name of it. It's a nice little bakery out front, and they are just schlepping enormous boxes of stuff across the counter all day.
Right.
Biggies or something, yeah.
See, but a catering ser-, to me, that's it's kind of like patisserie without the tables. Right?
Yeah, but the area is kind of, well, one, the area is a little self-limiting. You're not gonna get an enormous catering facility that's just doing sort of industrial sized food crap, because we don't really, who would they be serving? And we don't have the space in any of these buildings for that anyway. And the, the smaller catering services in this area would really benefit from having a display or some seats, because people would get to know them and choose them for their, it's just, logistically, that's how it would work out. So I think up to five thousand square feet is pretty safe.
I, okay, so I, you, we could say yes on catering service up to five thousand and more than five thousand, say special permit. And the same thing with a restaurant, yes, up to ten thousand and more than ten thousand by special permit.
Sure.
Okay, anybody?
I, 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 well.
Nick, let me say it again.
Is it a bad thing to have a large restaurant?
Well, like, when do we hit, like, you know, chain restaurants? What's the size break for that?
Oh, right, that's, yeah.
So if somebody wanted to come in. So if somebody wanted to come in and put one um.
Applebee's.
An Applebee's, right. I mean, again, I don't know where these cutoffs came from. And are most chain restaurants, like a ninety-nine or whatever, are those usually more than ten thousand square feet? Taylor, do you know?
So the 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 square footage has to be studied and and recommended by Michael. So just think of a, just think of small and large.
Okay, that's helpful. Great, large restaurants, I think no, because I think we're pushing, you know, we don't want, we don't want it to be. I I assuming that I'm thinking sort of like very large.
I don't think a hard no. I think a special permit.
Special permit, right.
So we would be yes, special permit on five thousand um above, no, up to and more than.
Large or small?
Small, so on catering, it would be small is a yes and large is a special permit on restaurant. Small is a yes and large is a special permit?
Yes, how many square feet is China Sky? I don't know. Anyway, okay, moving on.
Well, I can go into the assessor's map and look up the square footage of their lot.
No, 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 no.
Right, good, that's not. So then we get to fast food and takeout, so.
Fast food and takeout is getting to be such a like a whole new world. I feel like the takeout aspect with Uber Eats and all that stuff. It's just, it's so, it's different now. I I I almost feel like this is archaic, but we do want eating stuff. We do.
Yeah, I think I think we need to encourage food options. I think that makes a place.
And do we have definitions for fast food? Because when you say, when one says fast food to me. I think of places that you drive in, you park, you pick up something that's already made and you take it in your car and you go away.
That is correct. That is, that is what the use fast food is. It typically has a lot of parking. It has a drive through. You either park to go in or you drive through, whereas a takeout is something more like a storefront. Where you walk up to a counter, order something, get it quickly and leave, or there might be three to four seats.
Well, then I would. Make pass per, maybe we should make fast food special permit. I mean, if, I mean.
I would just say no, because we're trying to discourage large parking lot uses.
Well.
Yeah, but it might be something like fast food, the newest thing in in noodles or.
Well, that's that's more like takeout then.
Sally is correct there. Yeah, actually, the 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 distinction there is that one is car centric, the other is pedestrian centric.
Okay, so, all right.
What?
What's be good?
Be good would be more like takeout, but they would have to prove it.
Okay.
So we need some strong definitions and I don't know whether we have those in section ten right now. And we can certainly get them and we can get help from council and we can get help from Michael Wang.
I mean, during the pandemic, it was like.
Friendly, but fast food might, we might special permits so that we don't end up with a ton of traffic and parking.
And when the pandemic happened, that like car center thing and getting food. You you park and then somebody came out with with food for your car.
Can we say fast food, no drive throughs? I know.
I think we just really need it. If the definition for fast food is car centric, then I would say no also.
I would say no.
I don't know if that's exactly what it means.
Yeah. Well, fast food definitely means it's already made and it's packaged up. And you can get it through a window or run in and grab it. It's already made.
Mama do's.
I'd like to represent the team.
I mean.
That we incentivize taco shops.
Yeah, I I don't know. I I mean, I mean, Mama do's is already made too, but it.
All right, can we just say that fast food is just a question mark here, because we don't understand what that definition is?
And takeout would be a yes.
Keep going. Let's go. We have like four more pages.
Okay.
All right, we're not gonna go, whenever we get through by nine forty-five and I'm I've got to duck out.
Well.
I I think we should, uh. It, I I don't think we should go through one by one, by one by one. I think we should just, I the very obvious should be just.
Yeah, let's cruise through. Is there anything?
All right, well, then I don't see anything else here except overnight boarding of animals is forbidden and all the other animal uses.
SPGA, okay.
Special permit. And then everything that's listed, that's visible on the screen between art gallery and flea market. Well, let's say art gallery to cafe, because you've got cafe listed twice, but for the second cafe, okay? I would say any of those is fine.
Yes.
Totally yes.
And educational, I I think one of the things we're missing is ti- is space for small educational facility. You know, I think one thing people are traveling and paying for is anything that keeps their kids creatively occupied.
Right, and so um.
Isn't that in public and semi-public? That there's a bunch of daycare, family care, um private clubs, um.
Well, it says, yeah, private school.
I'm saying yes. I think people will continue to use that, even though.
I would say yes.
I think we can check that box.
Um.
Are we stopping at flea market for a reason?
Well, I just, what what does, what is envisioned by a flea market? I think about how.
Have you ever been to Porter Squ- Square? Oh, no, I mean, it's Davis.
Davis, Davis Square, they use the parking lot.
It's it's like completely active and exciting and.
I love it. I love it. I just, um.
I'm not sure why we need to say no to that, but.
No, I don't want to say no. I want to just imagine that it's possible.
Um, family daycare home, can someone clarify that or can we ask for clarification? Are we allowing family daycare in the residential units? Or is that, what does that mean?
That gets to home occupation and it's a whole separate part of.
Yeah, it seems like this doesn't, it seems like it doesn't, doesn't belong here. I don't know.
I agree. It should be. It's so necessary. I think that it's.
I don't disagree with it. I just feel.
Why would it come under this public and semi-public and not come under uses in a residence? You know, um, what's the word?
As long as it's there.
Home occupation. It would be a home occupation.
Yeah, hospital was one I obviously, I think maybe not a sanitarium on Main Street, but the um hosp- but so I don't know the boundaries of that. Like, can that be an adult daycare? Can that be sort of, I don't know, again, I think we had questions about the correct verbiage for some of this. But can that be an adult care facility where you have sort of vulnerable elders doing daily activities with supervised care? Does that include hospital or sanitarium?
Well, there's daycare center two lines up and you could say daycare center, comma, adult, daycare center, comma, children.
Okay, as long as we're including that and then otherwise.
And then family daycare home to me is a home use table of uses and we.
That would be interesting in a multi-unit house. I've only seen it more in like single family.
Right, but say you had an apartment building that had or a development that had, say, twelve units that went in. And in whatever form it is, and somebody in there wanted to have a family daycare for all the kids in the development. That would be a home use, correct? And they would be subject to family daycare regulations as promulgated by the Commonwealth, yada, yada, right?
Yep.
So we could say yes for all of that, but it and but again, maybe we would say special permit. That the planning board would like to know. Assurances that. As a family, as a ho- as a residential use.
Want to get involved in that? It just seems like there's so many um barriers to getting that started to begin with.
Right.
So you would say special permit or no?
No, I just say allow.
Regulations and building. That's, I don't.
That would be a no.
No, I would say just allow it. There are so many regulations.
We don't block it because there will be so many other barriers.
Oh, I understand. Thank you. Sorry to be obtuse. So yes.
Hospital, sanitarium, I think special permit. Other than that, this is.
Philanthropic use is a yes. I agree about the special permit for hospital and sanitarium. Philanthropic use, I would say yes.
Yes, sure. I mean, an essential cemetery.
Cemetery is a funny one, maybe special.
Take it out. We don't need a cemetery.
Maybe no crematories on Main Street.
Say again.
It seems like the only thing you could fit in a building there would be a crematory and I think that's sort of like a bad vibe, so maybe.
No, let's not do that.
Right.
Um, so school age childcare home, is that the same as family daycare home?
We're, we're not going to block it. We won't be the obstacle to that.
All right. Conference center, special permit, museum.
Yes.
Yes, theater entertainment, I actually wanted to have it be yes.
That'd be a huge yes for me.
And for por- and performance arts, I don't understand what emergency shelter is. Um, I don't think we have a permanent emergency shelter. We just, like, when I was a kid. We knew which buildings in town the 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 officials had deemed.
I I imagine that's what, that's why it's there, whether or not we decide if a building can be used as an emergency shelter. I think we would generally say we won't be the obstacle there.
And that's, that's, that's the metric. Same thing with parks, playgrounds and sports fields, but.
Um, small outdoor music venue doesn't seem, it seems like special permit kind of a thing.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, pond and lake is not a use. It's a landscape feature. I don't know why it's in this table. This is where I got really confused. Trails.
Same thing.
I thought community garden.
Manmade lake in their, in their yard.
Somebody buys one of these properties and just turns it into like a koi pond.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing. Artist studio, yes, residential.
Well, so this is where, when we got to the residential one, did we want to permit in these districts of MU one? Detached, single-family housing, and I would say no.
No, I think by right, they have everything that's like a down zoning, like I.
I'm sorry, say again.
I it's interesting, because the GBG, the in the central business district, I don't think a single family is allowed.
No, and I wouldn't say that it would be allowed in a multi-use district either. It's a way of encouraging.
Well, I don't think, would they do it?
Wait, is that like tiny houses? Like, what does that mean?
No, it's like converting a duplex or a large lot into one single family.
Oh, I see. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, no, that's.
I mean.
I would say no. We don't need more detached, single-family homes in this town.
But I I'm not sure that we should, well, I I don't.
Well, like in the middle of Manhattan, people convert like humongous buildings into one single family, that kind of.
Right, right. And and they're allowed to.
It's happened in the Back Bay too. Someone took a building that had multiple apartments.
To make multifamily, but it's not restricting them as to what they can do with it, with their property.
I just don't think we want to encourage detached, single-family homes on what is currently GBD two and three. There's, there are some that are existing. Um, and if somebody wanted to renovate and improve an existing. Single-family home on North Main Street, it wouldn't be outside the parameters of this use. But this is when there's a change of use, a new use. And I would say that if all the places in town where we are trying to discourage.
That's a good point. Are there any lots in here that are single-family houses that we had to keep for continuity? That we are hoping stay single-family houses?
Well, not within the three A district, so continuity is not the issue.
Yeah, I mean, there are some, I mean, there are some wood frame houses. I don't know if.
Yeah, there's some beautiful wood frame houses that are, that are.
They would just remain legal under pre-existing non-conforming.
Yes.
They wouldn't become illegal all of a sudden.
No, 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 never.
If they tore the house down, even though they they could go back up as a single family in a place where there was a single family.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I I mean, I I would much prefer that.
Or convert a duplex into a single family, which is kind of, I don't know. I like that in the, because I've seen that have. You you've been on Main Street or Washington Street and it becomes, instead of two seven hundred fifty thousand dollar houses, it becomes like a three million dollar house. So, I mean, yes, for housing purposes, but I, it seems like, I don't know, it seems like it's, it's a, it's, it's strange. That you would do that to down, you would not allow down zoning, but.
That's why I would, you wouldn't allow down zoning. I wouldn't allow converting a multifamily house into a single-family house. I would not support that on this strip of land, because this is where we're trying to encourage density and vitality. And putting a, you know, a a forty-five, forty-nine hundred square foot, single-family home, fronting right on North Main Street. I mean, that's a very kind of an eighteen eighties kind of a paradigm. And you see up in Woobird, those gorgeous big houses are all turned into offices and multiple units.
I think that will be rare. I think we want to be careful about preventing existing single families from being turned into single families. So if that's not an, if that's not going to happen, then I don't know. I don't know if I'm fully against leaving the.
I would, I. It's like somebody wanting to turn Sakura back into a single-family house. It seems like a lot of people in town would before that.
I would not. That's the whole point of encouraging more housing along the North Main Street corridor.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I was a little surprised when I found that the CBD didn't allow single-family homes.
Well, I don't think that the North Main Street District going forward over the next thirty years of Winchester. Responding to everything that's happening in eastern Massachusetts, that this is the place where we want to allow detached. More detached, single-family houses.
I still don't think we can have a rush of them, but, okay.
All right, I I'm sold. It's fine by me.
So we would say no, and all the pre-existing, not, pre-existing, single-family homes. Can stay that way, ad infinitum. They can be renovated, they can be um subject to all of the.
Okay.
Pre-existing, non-conforming laws that we're becoming more familiar with every day.
And it could also be a big lot made into three separate buildings and one is like a single-family-ish, right? It looks like a single family, but.
And I remember Michael made a big point of saying that there's single-family-ish looking buildings that, that. So but I'm I'm confused about the dupe, the two-family, because we basically zone single-family and two-family as. Largely the same thing and multifamily, it starts at three. So I guess, Taylor, you're asking us to say, would we be in favor of new two-family construction? Going up North Main Street.
We're also losing Nick in two minutes, so let's not spend too much. Any other.
Sign off. I'm fighting a cold. I I I'm sure you guys can adjourn.
Well.
Any other?
Yeah, we've got a couple more pages to get through. Um, I would say yes to two-family and move on, but other.
Yes, I agree. Uh, uh, we could convert a single family to a two-family, by rights.
Okay, or build a new two-family.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then conversion of large public building or public or private school buildings with ten thousand square feet of close for area or less and more. Um.
Conversion of it without a special permit? Wait, what? I don't.
Well, that has to be all special permit and it doesn't say what it's converting it into.
So would this be creative or would that be included?
Yeah.
Say again.
Saint Mary's, but.
Oh, it's converting it to housing, Sally, because it's under that residential category.
Oh, okay, I would say special permit for that whole line. And elderly housing, I would say.
Yeah, that's like the whole point, right?
Yeah, yes. And cluster development, so this gets into building forms and definitions. The only place in town we have cluster development is like the Pansy Patch. And I think the stuff on Grove Street going down the lakes, there's a couple of others. Um, but I would say. Yes.
Yes.
And other apartment house, yes. Consignment sale, that's a a a commercial use. It can just be bundled up above.
But no, what, no, is it though? Is it, is it about the consignment sale into residential? What does consignment sale mean?
Consignment sale is like, I want to, I want to sell my fancy clothes and get.
But make that into a residential building? Is that what?
No, I think I I think it's miscategorized.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And then the B and B, historic B and B home state, that's, that's something that language that was pulled from another town. And if you took out the word historic, because we don't have any historic buildings that are candidates to be, well, maybe they are. I I would just say yes, if that's what they want to do, but I would say special permit.
Well, the Katana Building is historic. That could be a cute, be there, that could be a cute B and B someday.
Okay, so we would say special permit for a B and B.
Right.
And then work, live would be special permit. And and one of the things I had.
No, it should be by right, isn't it?
That was a whole.
Residential stuff.
So let me tell you, I just started to dabble into research across the country on how people zoning bylaws define live-work. And one of the primary metrics is what percentage of the floor area of the unit is dedicated to each of those two? Sixty, forty, fifty, fifty, thirty, seventy. And then another thing was, um, is there a wall? A physical wall that divides the 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 work area from the residential area? And 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 if we can agree here on just those barest parameters. And work them into our definitions, that would be fine. But a lot of other places in the country go into much more detail about what kind of work it is.
I saw, so I think that, I think it's interesting to look at that. Um, I think we would allow it, but we need to spend more time in a separate meeting thinking about.
Okay, so you could say generally yes, but we need to really strengthen our definitions.
Yeah, because that would be, those would be good unit developments, because people are working from home, so that's.
Absolutely. And and a lot of times. Absolutely, and and a lot of times live-work means, I mean, like, if you're doing, you know, desk work at home, that's, doesn't have a high impact on on the residential area, I mean, you just make a messy desk and you clean it up.
You're welding something, yeah.
If you're a sculptor, if you're an artisan, a crafts person, a sculptor, a potter.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to.
It's really helpful. Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's keep moving.
Let's say yes, but we need to clear up the definition and then, um, I I don't even know what to think about home occupation because.
It's not the revolution and the British are no longer here.
Um, no, it's just that we came up, we we, like, you could say a home occupation is I'm a potter, I make my pots at home.
It's already allowed in all residential here.
Alright, so then then just say yes then, and I I had someone come up to us at one of our open houses and say Winchester could really use a small boutique hotel.
So this gets into Airbnb builds too, though, right?
I think it's a no for now because of the other parts of our bylaws, they know to Airbnb is short-term.
Yeah.
You can also just classify them as boutique hotel and short-term lodging. Short-term lodging is is a term to use for Airbnb, you can disallow that if that's what you choose, but you can, you can have boutique, you can zone for boutique hotel uses, which is not Airbnb.
And that would be under the lodging and boarding that we're looking at right now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Lodging, well, I wouldn't call it boarding, I would just call it lodging. And I would say boutique hotel and you charge by the night and you make it a really nice destination hotel for people who want to, whatever. I mean, I was told.
You can't assume the sensibilities of who builds it, we have to really think that one through.
Special permit then.
Very tentative, yes, very tentative.
Well, it would be a special permit then.
Yep.
Want to build a hotel, show us what you have in mind. Um, I don't know what more lodging breakdown means.
I will reiterate that we turned our adult use section into housing, so I'm saying tread lightly with the but, with the boarding, um.
Yeah, that's why I said took boarding out, it's, it's just boutique hotel, right? And then again, Taylor, this is cut and paste from other sources, mixed use provided that a minimum, the floor is reserved for commercial use, that that's I I don't want to require that.
It's required by right.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't know, we could fit a swimming pool, but that's interesting, but I don't.
I was, I had very mixed feelings about swimming pools, tennis courts and and other things because the lots are so small, but say somebody wanted to develop one of the larger parcels and they wanted to do a boutique hotel with a, with a swimming pool.
I think we should lean more lenient here.
Then yes.
Yes.
Well, there's all the noise ordinance problems with pickleball and that's the rest, right? Because pickleball courts are smaller.
And that's the thing.
Similarly with swimming pool on the outside too, I think a lot of.
And let's just say special permit.
Alright.
Definitely special permit.
And how much further do we need to go, Taylor, to keep going?
That's it, that's just those last two, the other customary principal uses, which I don't really know what that means, and then solar energy systems.
So the solar energy system reminds me to ask whether the incentives that we put in place for mixed use, uh, how how we sort of interface that with incentives that we might consider for sustainability measures.
Right.
Another discussion for another day, but.
But when you say a solar energy system, does that mean a building mounted or does it mean a, a, an array, a ground level array?
The idea is, is is actually more broad than solar energy system, it's using the land to generate energy sustainably.
Oh, I see, okay, so it literally would be like a turbine or a solar.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I don't think that we can address that right now, I'd like to do that in a, in a concerted conversation with climate action and sustainability and have it be a special article or something. But we don't have time for that and so I would just say special permit, if you have to say.
I mean, it's, it's technically impossible to have the space, so.
I mean, you'd.
So you just don't even put it in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, when people come to town and they want to do something and it's not in the table of uses, they go to the town planner and they say, Taylor, can I do this? And you say, well, it's not in our table of uses, we're gonna have to have the planning board make a decision, right? Or we're gonna have to take it to town meeting and change the table of uses, come back.
So at what, so at what point in the future do you think the planning board is going to want to utilize some of the land in this missed use district? Not for housing or for retail, but to put a bunch of solar panels on the ground?
I would say not, we're trying to increase vitality and solar panels do not increase vitality. They increase covered parking, like you can see over off Holton Street or whatever street that is.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, all done.
So Taylor, I don't have any idea if this gave you what you need to get to Z-Rack tomorrow.
Well, it's gonna be a busy day tomorrow, but what what I'll do is I'll take all the feedback from tonight, I'll regenerate all three tables and I'll go to Z-Rack and get their, their feedback on it.
Okay, and can I also ask that we also look at the existing table of uses and since it's so late, we can't do it tonight? But ask the Z-Rack also, I would like to know what uses that are banned in our North Main Street area that appear to be like dope slap, of course we want to allow those.
It'd be like asking some of the business owners what they've gotten proposals about.
Yeah, we've gotten some good feedback about that, we covered a lot of them today, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, what what you, what you'll see is, I I would say we covered about ninety percent of them, but but I certainly will get all of Z-Rack's feedback and, uh, and 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 get it.
And and ma- and make sure that when we're going through this whole drafting process, which leads up to getting it, um, into the warrant or the 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 warrant book, um, that we um, lost my train of thought, um, that we have clear definitions in section ten for each use.
Yep.
Which can be found online, like live-work, there's a huge, everything, okay.
We need to push a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I'll do that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second. I don't think, can you second, Sally, you have to.
Oh, that's right, I'm not supposed to, no, I can vote, you second, Carrie, thank you, bless you.
Now you do the roll call.
Okay, um, Yiching?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Nick?
I.
And I say I, Taylor, thank you for the meeting and thank you Nancy for being here and WinCam. And I have no idea who else is in this meeting, I suspect that it's, thank you, Brian for running for the planning board. And I don't know, Will.
Prepping for the role. Very impressive, good night, everybody.
Bye.